Good evening, welcome to our school committee meeting this evening. It is October 2nd, 2019. It is 7 o'clock. I'd like to call our meeting to order. If we would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll just remind everyone that we are being broadcast on cable as well as being recorded for future rebroadcast. Next on our agenda, we do have our student representatives, and I was expecting a Jeffrey and a Jacob, but I see only one of you here, so.
We have Jeffrey.
We have Jeffrey. Come on up, Jeffrey. We got a seat for you right here for us. Can you just introduce yourself and let us know what grade you're in?
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Tricon, and I am in 8th grade student council.
Great, welcome.
So, do I start or?
Yes.
Douglas Middle School has had a promising startup in sports, with cross-country boys winning their first, second, and third meets. The girls have all had amazing individual times and continue to improve. Up at the track, the JV soccer teams have added many promising 7th and 8th graders to their rosters. With an explosive startup, the girls JV is sporting a 9-0 record while the boys have earned a 3-3 record. On the opposite end of the spectrum, Douglas Middle School has now added a STEM class to our daily schedule. In this class, we deal with physics and engineering problems. We must overcome as a team. Our first big project this year is the popsicle stick bridge which we will strength test in the coming weeks. Tied in with STEM, LEGO Robotics has opened its doors for students to join and further develop problem-solving skills in groups. Currently LEGO Robotics is working on missions for the City Shaper Challenge, which is given out by the first LEGO League, and this year's topic is about solving problems within our community. The students are looking to find design flaws in the town of Douglas and come up with ways to correct them. Douglas yearbook cover selection drawings are due October 31st, as well as the cover selections. Yearbook is looking for members to join. It's a great way to interact with others and preserve Douglas Middle School's 2019 to 2020 school year for us all to look back at. We hope many people come to the next meeting. Happening in the 8th grade was the Jilla Field Trip on September 20th. 8th grade got to step into the Hall of Fame and relive some of the Patriots' greatest moments as we well view a short film on the Patriots' rough and bumpy path to greatness. The other group was making an Anusfeld team and with their budget built a team logo. Let's all hope the month of October shows the same drive and hard work from the previous month, and DMS students makes this school year the greatest one yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Appreciate it.
You're very nice.
So, we've had an opportunity to go through the library during STEM classes, and it is an active place.
Yep.
There was something with spaghetti and marshmallows that was going on.
Oh, yes.
What was that all about?
So, basically, you have to build, so the class is split up into different teams, and you get, I think it's like 20 stick, like 20, um...
Pieces of spaghetti.
Pieces of spaghetti, one, no, like, three feet of tape, and like, I think it's like one foot of string? And basically, you have to build, with those materials, you have to build the tallest-standing structure, and that can withstand the weight of the marshmallow without collapsing or caving over.
That's pretty cool.
It's been pretty busy in there, and I know that, I started to see some popsicle sticks the other day, and the kids were building their bridges, and they break up into different sections of the library, and they're doing their bridge building, and then they're gonna see what their strength, and strength testing them soon as well. So, that's been exciting, and it's been a pretty good start to the year. It's been, I don't wanna jinx anything, but it's hard to believe that we've already completed a full month of the school year already as well. So, well, thank you.
I'd also like to add that last year, I had joined the STEM club after school, and we did the popsicle, not popsicle, the spaghetti and, I don't know what it's called. The spaghetti marshmallow challenge, and we had the bright idea to combine a bunch of spaghetti sticks and make this pillar standing up with a triangle base at the bottom. And we would've had it about like this tall, but we got negative seven feet inches. It leaned over under the table.
Popped on you.
Well, I'm glad you're having a good start to the year, and thank you for all your information sharing it with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
You're welcome.
With that, we'll move to our public comment and communications part of our agenda. And I do not see any public here, so we are gonna skip through them. Any old business that anyone in the committee would like to cover this evening? Any new business that we wanna bring up?
Well, for new business, Jeff was wondering whether Ms. Muldoon was gonna be here. He was looking forward to it. That's what he said.
All right, so with that, we'll move on to our superintendent's report section of our agenda.
Very good, thank you. So, if I could begin by asking if the committee would indulge for next meeting for a presentation, a little bit on the initial planning that the administrative team has done for the 2021 school year, some of our thoughts, directions, and so on and so forth. A couple of weeks ago, we sat down and we talked a little bit about where we're going and next steps and so forth, so I'd like to come in and share that in advance, if the committee doesn't mind giving us and bring the admin team for about 15, 20 minutes to share that with you.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I provided, and I believe that Lauren shared with you, some recommendations. This came to us by way of the state on public participation at school committee meetings. There's been a lot of issues around this in other districts, and there's been some clarifications that have been made, and in reviewing our policy against their recommended policy, there were some suggestions of things that I think we might wanna consider. So, this was sort of a first reading, but the points that I added to, and I believe start with number eight, and they run through 12.
So, the top half of the sheet was our existing policy?
Correct.
In totality, that was our entire policy?
Yes.
And everything below that, in the red, is our suggested additions to that policy?
What came out of this was that there was an issue at another district in which there were some comments that were made, there were some statements that were made, there was a lot of animosity, and the chair actually stopped the presentation and claimed that there were some libel issues, there were concerns about harassment issues, and so on and so forth. And it made its way all the way to the courts, and as it turns out, the courts indicated that it really is not the chair's position to make a determination as to whether or not somebody is harassing or somebody has engaged in libelous talk, that it could only be the case if it has been through the court system. And so, it really has changed how public speak takes place in school committee meetings, and this happened towards the beginning of the year last year, worked its way through the courts, and this was recommendation, and it was brought up again at the summer conference that probably worthwhile revisiting what you have in your district for your public participation so that we are avoiding any possible legal action that might be, that might come from it. And so, I know that we like to go through a reading process, so I thought this would be the first reading to share and answer any questions you might have, but as I said, number eight, "Public speaker can speak directly to matters that are linked to the superintendent and his or her responsibilities." So, they cannot speak to student matters, to faculty matters, to support staff matters, to custodians, and so forth. But if it's something that involves someone in my position, they actually can speak directly to, you know, my actions and so forth. "The public speaker is prohibited from presenting formal complaints aimed at a specific or any member of the faculty, staff, or members of the student body as they are not hired or fired by the school committee." "The restriction of public speech related to defamatory remarks by the chair of the school committee is..." Sorry, "Restriction of public speech related to defamatory remarks by the chair of the school committee is only lawful if these remarks have been previously declared defamatory by the court." "The First Amendment can be limited if public speech is improper, blatantly vulgar, and/or abusive in nature, which can be challenged in the court," and then the last thing that they suggest you add is something to the idea of improper or abusive comments should either be stricken or defined as prohibited due to vulgarities threatening or intent to provoke violence or violent reactions.
Did we take these additional bullets from another?
Right, so from the Massachusetts Superintendent's Association had issued this as guidance, if you will.
Okay.
You can also find that, I believe, these are also directly taken as a result of the court case from the district that modified their...
Yeah, I think I'm familiar with that. I could find if I need to. So, the only question I had on this was regards to number 10, and maybe it's because, you know, I had that chairman title after me, is why that's restricted just the chair of the school committee and not the entire school committee on that one, so.
It is, it's actually only the chair who can regulate public speak.
Oh, but it sounds like it's restricted, it's referred to remarks by the chair, so I'm just...
So, what ended up happening was, conversely, the comments that they made, that the chair made, were deemed to be defamatory as well. So, you can't make defamatory speech.
I guess, yeah, and again, we have so little experience with public attendance at our meetings, so I think where it comes to is the chair would be the one that would respond directly with, okay. So, that makes sense, yeah. I think Kelly made my point for me too, which is probably just policy language generally that gets a little wonky sometimes.
This is the grammar nerd in me, but the restriction by the chair.
It's not your remarks.
It's not the remarks, it's the restriction, because you're the only one that can restrict.
Yeah, oh, restriction by the chair of public speech related to defamatory. I gotcha.
Yeah, it can be read two different ways, yeah.
Yep, I gotcha, okay.
Let me go back and reference that, and if there is a change so that it reads a little bit more effectively, I'll bring it back at the next meeting for the second reading and so.
No, I think Kelly has the right interpretation of it there, yeah, and I think, again, policy things kinda, it can be tough to word things exactly right in a concise manner, so.
I have a couple of questions. I think they'll be quick. Did they give you any examples of things that have been deemed defamatory by the courts?
So, the incident that was involved was that there was some character assassination of members of the committee.
Right.
There was some character assassination of staff members and also the superintendent.
Okay.
The matter involved a student issue that was pretty grave in nature, and that's what led the comments from the parent to speak the way that she did to the committee.
Okay. So, I was also wondering if the speech is improper, blatantly vulgar, number 11, blatantly vulgar and/or abusive in nature, can the chair just, can the chair, does the chair have the choice between, you know, you need to change your language, or may the chair also just say, "I'm cutting you off"?
Correct. Either one of those two are an option. If the chair believes that, should this be tried and brought to court, that the chair would be on firm ground, that clearly the nature of it was abusive, that clearly it was vulgar, so forth, and so. But that would be your decision to make, which obviously, the committee can make the same commendations, but it would be you who would cut them off as the chair.
Okay, and my last quick question. On number nine, that they have to be, "Public speaker is prohibited from presenting formal complaints aimed at any specific or any members of faculty, staff, or members of the student body as they are not hired or fired by the school committee." Should that language also include student body's family members or community members? Because I could, I mean, again, we have nobody sitting here, but I could see it being a, so this kid did this, and his, you know, his dad told him that was fine. Maybe that's just outside of the scope.
Right, I think it's inferred, but I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing that it could be added, and again, and the rationale is that you guys do not have direct control, that that would be something that I have direct control of. The only person that you directly hire and fire is me, so.
Okay, that's all I had.
And Courtney, you can get with Courtney if you'd like to also.
Yeah, I would say if you want an example of something that probably borderlines in some of this, is watch the most recent Board of Selectmen's meeting, which I watched today. Interesting language used on one of the topics, pretty early in the meeting, so. It was borderline, yeah.
And so, because of what happened and how this worked its way through the courts, the recommendation was, "Review what you have, and if necessary, revise what you have so that it's in compliance with the outcome of the court proceeding."
Yeah, and I wanted me to disparage your board of selectmen, I think they handled the situation well, but they had a pretty contentious issue that was brought before them, and so.
And I will say that in my 37 years, I've been at meetings, in school committee meetings, where there has been some contention, and there has been some aspersions cast towards people and so forth, so. It does happen. Yeah, all right, so that's the first reading. I'll look to make a couple of adjustments and bring it back for a second reading, and go from there. Update on the Douglas High School's science lab. Mr. Romano is here, but, so we've had a couple of opportunities. As you know, presently, we have shut the gas off to the school, to the high school, because when we had a local vendor come out and do some testing to see if, in fact, there were some leaks, there were a few small leaks that were fixed, but even after they fixed the small leaks that were readily available, readily, they were able to get to, they went back and ran another test, and the pressure dropped again. So, clearly, there are some leaks in the lines in areas that are not readily visible, meaning in the floor or in the walls and so forth. And so, because of that, we had shut it down. So, we did have, we've had a couple of meetings on this. We had Chief Vincent, the, I'm sorry, forgetting, the fire marshal, somebody from the fire marshal office, the fire marshal himself, and then the building inspector came out, and Jeff and Courtney and myself, and we walked, and so we brainstormed some things, and, you know, the question became, we don't use, there's six science labs in this building, we don't use the gas in four of the classrooms, so it makes sense that, is there an alternative where we just pipe the gas to two of the rooms?
To run new lines to the two rooms?
Correct, from the outside. So, the thought was that the tanks are in the back of the building, behind the English wing, on the edge of the English wing. Bring them to the front, run them up to the two buildings, the two classrooms on the front of this wing here, and just those two rooms are the rooms that you can run any kind of experiments that involve gas. But then Jeff Colette had an interesting idea, which was to cap the lines and only leave those two classroom lines open, and run a pressure test again, to see if the pressure doesn't drop into those two classrooms, then why do that? The leaks are somewhere else. Now, I think it's highly unlikely that that's the case. I really do.
At least try that first.
Let's try that first before we do it.
Make sure it passed muster too with the fire marshal.
Right, so, but if not, then the only alternative is to bring in the, to find a way to pipe the gas into those two classrooms, and it could be as simple as asking those two teachers to move their classrooms downstairs, they're identical classrooms, and just put the gas tank there and run it directly into the classroom rather than running it up the wall and putting it in and so forth. So, we have not completely resolved it as of yet. We're in the process of trying to resolve it. Emily Dower and Jeff there have been supportive. We hope to come back and have some more definitive answers for you, but that's where, there was supposed to be a meeting today, but there was an emergency call, so the person could not meet with us at 2 o'clock. I was hoping that I'd have more information for you tonight based on that, but we don't.
So, is this restricting our ability to kind of execute on our curriculum at this point?
So, I think the only place is the AP chemistry class, and I think what she's doing is bumping them back. I mean, they like to do it in sequence, but I think she's had to bump back those labs until we're able to resolve it. One of the other things that we talked about for the time being was to use those small, I'm not sure whether they're, I don't think they're really bunsen burners, but they're... Utean type of things in the classroom, but you have to bring the propane in and then take the propane back out. Yeah, basically. So, we're gonna use it in the foods class as well. No, but, so, but we're waiting on some, we had them come out to talk about that, but we have, no one has put their name on a piece of paper that says, "Yep, that's the plan, go right ahead." And until they do, we're a little reluctant to go ahead and do that as of yet, so. That's kinda where we are with the science labs.
So, do we think we can go through kind of the steps to either, you know, test the two lines only? If that doesn't work, to bring new lines? What's your timeline?
So, I would say sooner rather than later. If we can get the local vendor to come out and try that.
They'll be done within a month, I guess, is that?
I would hope so, yes.
Okay.
We actually just talked about it this morning at the admin meeting, and so we're, hopefully, we can get them out here sooner rather than later. It would be, I think it would be amazing if that were the case. I just, my sense is that the leak is probably in the biology classroom that had the flood that has all the new countertops and cabinets and...
Of course.
New floor and so forth, and it's through the floor, and it's out the back wall, and we'll have to take everything out. So, that would be our luck, if you will. So, so the next thing I had on the docket was district radios. I wanted to update the committee that we, as you know, we came forward and we talked about ordering some, I call them walkie-talkies, but I guess I'm old school, they're really called radios now. The theory was that we were looking to get radios for our school psychologists, our adjustment counselors. We had a couple of admin that did not have them. Mrs. Urquhart didn't have one, Mrs. Nastudy didn't have one, Mrs. Sosha didn't have one, and so we ordered and we've distributed them. We also were going to place, as you recall, a radio at the fire department and a radio at the police department on repeater. We have a radio dedicated exclusively to the repeater channel in each of the four buildings in the main office, and that gives them direct connection with the dispatch of the police, and so that we can immediately communicate with them. It's just another vehicle along with the panic switches that we have and so forth. They started testing them today, but Breck had called away, so they're gonna finish testing them. The only concern we really have is that we're not sure just how strong the signal will be from, say, the high school to the fire department. But I was told by Chief Mingliyanik that the calls come to him, come to the police department first anyways, and then get channeled down to the fire department, so that would work for us. So, everybody presently has the radios now, more so than they had. An excellent point was brought up by Mr. Delaney today, which is that we're gonna, we've asked each building principal now to meet with the people who have radios, to talk about what the repeater channel is for, how to use the radios, what type of conversations on the radio are acceptable, and so forth. And so, we've taken care of that, which I think is a good thing. So, every building has one, every nurse in the building has one, and every administrator now has one, and all of our adjustment counselors and psychologists have them, and they're being used, which is a good thing. So, that's the update on that. MCAS result overview. As you know, one of the things that is an issue is that, I think, I can't remember if it was Josh, you reached out to the state, but there is a, usually, the information comes in, and we're able to disseminate it, and it's in the newspapers, and it says, you know, how the 10th grade did, the 9th grade. And for some reason, and I think it's related to the fact that there was a problem with the 10th grade ELA MCAS this year on one of the essay questions, we have not been able to, so the information, I can't really share a lot of information with you numbers-wise because it's still embargoed, but I can tell you a few things. So, one of the things about the MCAS is that there's been some adjustments and some modifications, and these are the areas of the accountability system that we focus our attention on. It's on student achievement, student growth, so they're gonna, they provide us with data on student achievement, how they did on the exams, student growth, what level of growth that the individual student have from one year to the next year. The high school completion rates, they give us the hard data on the number of students who have completed in four years, how many completed in five years. They give us information on progress towards students who are becoming English language proficient, where they are in that cycle. They give us information on chronic absenteeism throughout the district, each individual school in the district, as to what our ratings are, and then also what our status is with regards to advanced coursework, and that relates to a lot of the APs that we have at the high school and honors level classes. So, that's the data that we get, and I can tell you that, for the most part, our absenteeism is better, our English language proficiency is online, our advanced coursework is above state average, our completion rate is above state average as well. I don't have the information on student achievement and growth. I don't have individual students across all the district, and I believe that they are still embargoed for some reason, so. But we will come back as a group and go through all of the grades and where we stand.
So, I know you've had a pretty intensive process of reviewing those in the past. Any changes to that process for this year?
So, we're gonna continue that stuff. So, one of the things is that I wanted to address, because I know it's gonna be a point of concern, is the Adams Scholars and the Kopplick Scholars are in a holding pattern right now, and the reason is that, as you're aware, in grade 10, they issued an essay question that was found to be offensive by some of the students, so they pulled that essay. The problem was that the essay had been completed by the students, so therefore, they had to go back and come up with a new grading scale, and they're not really sure that they've got their grade correctly. It has created a trickle-down effect that has been monumental for the DESE, and I've been, you know, been doing it since they started the MCAS, and I've never seen a situation like this that has had such an impact, so. And I know Josh was reaching out to parents about, you know, retests, and again, keep in mind that for the high school, the test was online this year, first time we've done the online test, and the types of questions that were asked a little bit different. So, that essay question is causing a lot of problems for the state, and it's also causing problems for us being able to share it. There has been some changes to the scoring rubric. Used to be that a 220 was considered a passing grade. Now, it's a 440, I think it is now. So, there's been all kinds of stuff. We hope to clear it up for you in a couple of weeks once we were able to get all that information. But to your point, I can tell you that the information that I've been able to look at has us performing above state average in many things, slightly below state average in a few areas, at state average in other areas. So, all in all, when I think, when we're able to finally share with the committee, you'll find that we're still performing well on the MCAS, and one of the things that I think is gonna be helpful is when they, if we can come back and compare the MCAS data, which is a snapshot in time, with the Ames Web data that we have, and now the elementary school has got the Ames Web, but they're also using the NWEA that the middle school use, which is that northwest where you got the big grant. So, they've got that data. So, now you can compare content area, types of questions. We can do a much deeper dive into that information. So, we will bring all of that to you. The plan is, again, to, the admin team, to look at the data, come up with their understanding of their specific buildings and their grades, and then they would go back and share that with their faculty, and then they would begin the process of working to address those areas where there's a need for some improvement along the line. So, that's the plan for the MCAS. The other thing that, as you recall, was the vertical teams, so we talked about that a little bit today, that's one of the focuses of the initial vertical teamwork, is to look at the data where it's an opportunity for the teachers to sit down and really look at the data as well, and look at it from a spectrum of 6 to 12 and from 2 to 6, and kinda do some analysis.
Where do you say, you know, we're at 10th grade, science, we're struggling here, what are you doing back in 6th grade? You know, that you can set them up better.
You know, this type of question seems to be an area where our students are not performing well. Are you asking students these types of questions? One of the areas that continues to show up is open responses in math curriculum, and are we spending enough time working with the students? I know that the literacy piece is an important piece at all of our buildings, but are we also translating that into the math department and asking them math questions, real-life problem-solving questions that they have to write about? And are they, do they have experience with that during the school year? So, those are the kind of things that we're gonna look at and try to address for your, but we'll also give you the hard numbers as well.
Great. Any questions on that? We'll pause here. Great, thank you.
I hope that that will be in two weeks.
Okay.
But it really depends upon whether the state allows us, ends the embargo, and we're able to talk about it and share it with you.
So, we should plan for a long meeting in two weeks now. We're doing that, and then you were also doing, what was the other thing we asked about earlier?
I would say long meeting, but yeah.
We've had some good ones, yeah.
We'll try to keep it...
No, I don't wanna restrict it, just so we know.
Just a couple of items rather than a lot of items.
Yeah, yeah, good.
So, that was that, and then the superintendent... So that was that, and then the superintendent contract deadline has arrived. As you know, October 1 was yesterday, today is October 2.
Yes.
I don't know if you want to speak to that, if you would like.
No, so we probably should have addressed this as, as a committee during our last meeting, but I, I think that's why we're gonna have executive session this evening, just to get our official position on our desire and our lack of desire to, you know, extend, an extension after, to, to Mr. Mainz. I, I think I know what the answer will be there, but just, we should, we should need to make that official. And then to get an, an official word from Mr. Mainz, whether he'd be interested in, in continuing on with us. You know, we've had some conversations throughout the summer.
Right.
And I think, you know, it sounds like he, you know, retirement is calling, but I think if you, if you look at, at his whiteboard and look at his, his 2020, 21 plan, he doesn't look like a guy who's out the door either, so.
Right, so that's the problem right now. And Josh can speak a little bit to this as well, is that our first full admin meeting of the, of the school year was two weeks ago, and Courtney can speak to it as well. I had, I had all kinds of paper covering the, the whiteboard. And, and as I started pulling them down, the last thing that I pulled down was initial planning for 2021 with the statement that, okay, the school year is underway, what are we doing next year? And, and really talking about, okay, how do we continue to build upon what we're doing? And that's the, that's the hard part right now, is because we, we, we really presented over the course of the last three years a lot of, really going back a number of years, even when I was serving as the principal, there was things that we wanted to add and so forth. So that's kind of where, Brian Delaney said it best. He says, you do not look like, the board does not indicate someone who is taking a soft landing type of thing. And I, I think, as I said on opening day, I'm, I think I'm still 99.9% sure that that is the case. The, the issue is unfinished. I'm not one who likes to walk away without the work being sort of finished, but the problem is to finish it might take a few more years. And, and that's troublesome, that's probably, probably troublesome as well, because I don't see myself hanging around for two or three more years. But stranger things have happened.
Excellent. Well, I, I would say regardless of what the outcome of, again, our, our standing on the matter or whether, you know, you were, you know, to decide yourself whether to continue or not, I, I appreciate that. At this point, at least, you're not going for a soft landing, and, you know, it, it doesn't surprise me at all.
Right.
You know, and I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I did have an article that I saw in the newspaper, and if you'll grant me a few seconds, I would like to just read a little bit of it. So the title is, "When a Job Ends and Life Goes On." That's the title. I'll make it up. It's right there. And it talks basically about someone who was a student of a professor, and, and, and I'll, I'll just share it with you. So in the late, um, late nights, I told, I thought of my old chemistry professor, a famous specialist in statistical thermodynamics. I don't know even what that is, but his introductory chemistry course filled pre-med students with dread, which did everything, which he did everything to try and prevent. Famous professors often leave introductory courses to the less famous and those who, who don't still prefer to leave human contact to grad students. But then he, he reads, he, he ran his own study sessions and he energetically met with any petitioner who sought help. All who had to do, all he had to do was ask. Nothing made him happier than when every, everyone excelled on the exam. After the course ended, we met seasonally at a Chinese restaurant, a lucky community of students he took to lunch. There were no dark motives. He cared to know about our lives, our choices, our plans. It never occurred to me that while I was feeling honored, he was feeling necessary. When we, when he was perhaps in his late 60s, or early 60s in this case, the university took away his parking space and his office. He had given almost a half century of life, a half century of life to turn in such, for the, for the, I'm sorry. He had given almost a half century of life and they turned on him in such a way. At the time, I didn't understand what he was feeling. His professional life was coming to an end, while mine was just beginning. You study, you learn, practice, work, and on the rise, you never consider the fall. I consider it now, he had gone to such lengths, this professor, to teach us chemical concepts most of us had forgotten immediately. But even after the cold, cold water, which was the beginning of the story, it doesn't make sense, he continued, he continued to ask about our lives and paid for his own parking space. He understood at least, I deeply hope he did, that while he was dispensable to the university, he remained indispensable to us. The lesson he taught that I remembered is the job ends, but one way or another, we remain necessary. And so if I were to sum up my struggles is, how do I retire and still feel necessary? That's kind of where I'm at right now. So I wanted to share that.
There's no easy answer to that question, Mr. Delaney.
No, there's not.
As long as he's been a stay at home dad for four and a half years now.
And, and I appreciate the committee's indulgence with that, that reading, but, but also the fact that if you've been in my office recently, I think, and you've seen the whiteboard, and it's, it's, it's actually become a little bit more crowded. So, so that's the hard part. And, and, and I think one of the things that I, I hope that you'll consider in your discussions tonight is, if in fact I am going, is this still the way the committee, and that's why I want to present it in a couple of weeks, is this still the way the committee wants to go? And if so, and this is from the admin, and Josh was there this morning, their concern is, is this still the direction the committee wants to go, and is that going to be a part of the process in who you hire to replace?
Right, as to the kind of the plans that you've set out.
Correct, because of their investment in it, and, and I think that they, and, and that's so, if, that's something that I would
Yeah, that, that's something, yeah, we'll, we'll have to tackle kind of when we get there. And, you know, I, I don't think we'd want to just throw all the good work that you've done, and hopefully you've instilled a lot of what you've been working on with your, your team, and they'll feed that back up to whoever does replace you at whatever point that is, so.
I think it was Mr. Delaney who said today, that said, the sign of good leadership is that when you're gone, what you left sticks. And so we'll see. But thank you for your indulgence.
You're welcome.
Time to call close to 37 years, you know.
I know. Actually, I don't, but I can imagine.
You're all gonna get there. And that's everything. Thank you.
You're welcome. With that, we'll move on to our subcommittee reports. Counciltable report.
On 9/12/2019, I signed three batches totaling $68,293.26. On September 19, 19, seven batches totaling $270,656.06. And on 9/26/2019, eight batches totaling $73,511.83, and nothing unusual.
Been busy. Next up is our consent agenda, first being our minutes from September 18, 2019. Did have a chance to read through this week, and I did not find anything that seemed out of place. Anyone else have any amendments, questions on these minutes?
Not to be picky, but when Mr. Argyle was not present, Ms. Mulder did not ask, act as chair.
Ah, who was that?
Under, after you left, page three, I believe. Under the .6 FTEEL teacher. That must be when you left.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so there's that, and I think there's a couple of other instances, as I, now that I remember reading it, that there was some mention of, was it on the back page here? No, I think this is all right, yeah.
There it is.
About the EL student, okay.
Okay.
So that should be changed.
You gotta get credit for your first evening of chair.
Hey, trial by fire there.
Yeah, my apologies to everyone for my unceremonious early departure for the last meeting. Okay, so Mr. Mainz, I'm sorry, you, you had other changes, amendments?
No, that was it.
Okay.
I thought there was another.
So, yeah, so just, we want to have these amended to replace Ms. Grady's name and Ms. Mulder. In that, that one section there, there's three. Okay?
Yep.
If there's no other issues with that, I'll take a motion to accept these meeting minutes from September 18, 2019, as amended.
So moved.
Motion from Becky.
Second.
Second from Kelly. Any other discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained?
Saying aye.
Next up, we have our DHS promotion requirements. Mr. Romano coming up.
Mr. Romano is here to join us.
Excellent.
It's a good thing he is, because there's, he's just one percent.
Someone loves us.
School committee meets in an empty room if they really met.
Fresh back from Italy. Mr. Romano had a little trip to Italy.
Buenos Aires.
Excellent.
It was a good time. Big family trip. So what I have here are proposed graduate, promotion requirements. Basically, what it would take, how many credits a student needs to earn to move from grade nine to 10 to 11 to 12. We don't have any in place right now, and what we're finding is happening more the last couple of years is students who come into senior year and they need more credits than they can actually earn at DHS in order to graduate, so now they're having to take online courses outside of school. And what ends up happening, we have several students this year who have to take double gym, plus a full senior schedule, plus they're taking a course outside of school, one student's taking two. And the student who couldn't pass six courses in gym as a junior isn't likely to pass six courses, two gyms, and two online courses outside of school without a lot of work and support. So what we created out of these were basically an incentive to get students to stay on track to graduate. And that's how we set them up, is that a student has to be on track to graduate with only DHS credits in order to advance. Now, they can make that up if they fail a course as a sophomore, they can make it up by taking it as summer school or online course or something. But they need to be capable of just taking DHS courses in order to move to that next grade.
So to that point, so isn't that, you can leave sophomore year, necessarily being short of credits, but you can't start junior year unless
They would basically be retained as a sophomore until they made up those credits. So, and there's a couple of ways that they can do that. So the, the easy end, maybe the less controversial end is, you know, to become a junior, to become a senior. What we basically did was we took, you need 124 and a half credits to graduate from DHS. You can earn 32 and a half credits as a senior, so we just set it at 92 and a half credits. If the student passes all of their courses senior year, they're good. If they haven't, then they need to complete their summer school, because that's the other thing that we found the last couple of years, is the completion rate of summer school has dropped. It was well over 50% just a few years ago. I think it's, it's closing in on 25% of kids actually complete summer school courses. So this is an incentive for them to complete the course, so that when they come in the next year, they're a senior with their peers, instead of having to now take another online course or something else outside of school.
Could I jump in for just one second, Josh? There are restrictions to qualifying for summer school as well.
Right.
And, and, and there is, there is a policy in place with regards to that. What ends up happening is that a lot of students take a program like called the American School, or would have to make up the entire course. And so they're, they're, they're playing catch up. And I, I can, can tell you that there were numbers of students along the way that were in that trouble, and they were taking one or two of these courses on the, with the American School or, or virtual high school type of thing, because they couldn't take the, they didn't qualify for summer school. So now they were trying to do, like Josh said, seven courses here, two online courses. And it's just, it's just a struggle to get it all done. But there are limitations. You can't just automatically jump into, to summer school and everything becomes resolved.
That, that's a good point, too. We also had said it so that if a student, what happens also is the student starts school, and we say, well, you, you failed your summer school program. And then they maybe will get the incentive to, they have to pay themselves, but they can pay to, to extend it for another six weeks or so and finish it off. Now, if a student does that, so they, essentially they come in, they don't have enough credits to be a senior under this system, but they finish that course in the first four weeks of school, we'll promote them to being a senior, which means that they can do all of those senior activities. It kind of works out pretty well, because most of the senior privileges, other than eating outside, really the first one kicks in, the Halloween parade. So it gives them two months at school to get their act together and finish off those summer courses, and the only thing they've lost is the ability to eat outside.
What are they doing for classwork, that, that first four to six weeks?
They would be taking the courses that they need. Plus finishing off that summer course. If they end up that they don't finish it, they're just gonna have to do it as summer school the next summer, or they're gonna have to do it as an online or virtual high school course.
But they don't have their senior privileges yet until they finish the junior requirements, okay.
And if they go through the whole year and they don't finish everything, then they wouldn't be, that course is still hanging over there. They wouldn't be allowed to walk or any of that other stuff.
Right.
Get to participate in any of the, any of the, any of the senior activities until they've completed that, that extended course.
Okay.
So we, we set the bar basically at, if you just, if you complete your work, then you move on. Just to try to avoid those students who all of a sudden they're looking at senior year and it's, they can't possibly fit all the credits that they need. It also gives us some guidelines for students who come in as transfer students. You know, they, they might be at another school where that, that other school considered them to be a senior, but they need 40 something credits from Douglas High School. They're not remotely where our seniors normally are. So it kind of gives us some guidelines for transferring students, too.
I had a question about the jumps, and like, I apologize if you've already, already addressed this, but
It's okay.
I was curious as to, like, promotion to sophomore, that they have to earn 25 credits, that sort of made sense to me.
That's the tough one. So let me explain that one. So the, the movement to junior and senior, it's pretty straightforward. You can earn 32 and a half credits as a senior, so we just set it at 124 and a half, minus 32 and a half.
Okay.
Oh. Sorry, I didn't know you were out there. Same with junior, we just, you know, how many credits can you earn as a junior and a senior? Okay, subtract that from what you need to graduate. There you go. You need 60 credits to be a junior.
Okay.
Freshmen to sophomores, the one we really wrestled with a lot. So we gotta follow the math a little bit. A student, if they just take courses at DHS, they can earn 134 and a half credits. You need 124 and a half to graduate, so that means you can fail two full year courses over the course of your time at DHS, and you can still graduate with your class. So there's a little bit of wiggle room built in.
If you've met all the requirements.
If you've met all the requirements. You still have to do four years of English, four math, two, two foreign language. But you can, you know, you could double up somewhere, you could, you know, do something, and you can still graduate without making up those 10 credits. What we basically did was we allowed the student to miss those 10 credits freshman year and still move them on to being a sophomore, with the idea being that we don't want students to get discouraged and then start on that process of dropping out. And that's where I think you really start to do, that's where I think you see kids thrown in the towel, is when they come back and they're a freshman again. So we're basically giving them those two courses that they, that wiggle room that they have freshman year. It also gives us that leverage to say from then on, if they fail a course, like, you know, if you fail this course, you're either doing summer school or you're a sophomore again next year. And that's in place right from the beginning. So it's giving them that incentive to either stay caught up with their work during the school year or to actually finish that summer school course. The part that, that my staff and I have really wrestled with is the other part of that, that sentence that you, that you said there, earning 25 credits, that one's pretty, I, I can stand by that one. We, we don't want them getting too frustrated as freshmen when it, it just seems too far away. Earning five credits in math and five credits in English. I borrowed that from the graduation requirements when I was at Murdoch and from some other schools. The reasoning behind that at a lot of schools, the reason I did that at Murdoch was because our MCAS scores were very low. And we were trying to, to prevent students who were not going to be prepared from taking those MCAS courses. We don't really have that problem here. So that's one where everybody kind of said the same thing. I can see the reason for it, but I'm not really sure we need it. That's the one where, and I, and I don't know that I'm gonna have you actually vote on this tonight, because I'm not sure we need that five credits in math and English thing there. Because what we basically be saying is, you know, the student passed all of their courses except for English, and so they don't move on. And I don't know that that's necessary. If our MCAS scores were, if we were in danger of like becoming a, a level four school or something, yeah, I'd probably really support that. Not facing that.
So that part, you, I mean, you know much better than I do about any of this. This is, this was the only thing that caught my eye, is that the 25 credits seem, that's obviously the lowest number. To promote to a junior, they have to have a total of 60, so they have to take, if a student takes the minimum of 25 credits freshman year, they have to take the they have to take the highest amount to be able to be promoted.
They have to pass everything from then on.
Pass 35.
Yep.
Okay, so...
They've lost that wiggle room. Or, or they have to do summer school.
So I just wonder if in, this will be in the student handbook?
Yeah, that's where it would be.
Okay.
So it would be in the student handbook in the program of studies. And, you know, it, I mean, it has to be in those places for it to really be, um, something that, that, that we put into practice. And it would also be, we would be starting this with this year's freshmen. So students who have already, you know, if you're already in junior year this year, we're not gonna suddenly say to you, well, you need 37 credits, so you can't be a senior.
Right.
You know, we're, we're sort of unfair.
Yeah.
So that, that piece about, you know, should we, do we need to say that they have to pass math and English? Well, I don't know that it's particularly necessary here.
Yeah.
And nobody on my staff feels particularly passionate either way, and neither do I, so...
See, I was, I would just weigh in there. I was actually curious why we didn't have more of that throughout the other promotions.
So that's the other thing that we can do.
If you have to get four years of math, are you gonna let them just pass freshman year and then get the other three?
Yep.
You know, I guess sets of credits in, in senior year, or, or do you have to get a, hit a math benchmark?
Now, Mr. Mainz and I actually talked about that today, too, is should we set it so that, you know, to be a junior, you have to earn 10 credits in math, 10 credits in history, 10 credits in English, 10 credits, which is another piece of that whole idea of like, we wanna keep students on track. And so that's another, you know, Mr. Mainz and I just talked about that today. And so, you know, I think that's why, I, I think I wanna table the vote on it and maybe go back and talk to, to my staff again, because I hadn't really considered that.
Yeah.
It would be consistent with...
And maybe it's, you know, I'm thinking if there's, if there's some kind of a matrix. I'd, I'd hate to see a senior trying to, you know, make up two sets of math and two sets of English at that point. So may, maybe it's like, you can only have one or the other. You know, either, either you have to have your English caught up by junior year, or your math caught up, or, you know, something like that where, you know, you're not just trying to think on so much.
You don't have to double up in everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, so maybe, maybe there's something that you can do there.
Yeah, you know, and I...
I'm sure there's no easy answers either, so I don't want to make, you know, this is too much of a critique.
Well, the easiest answer would just be 60 credits. But then, you know, again, if you have a student who's not good at math, and now, hey, you're gonna take geometry, algebra II, and math topics senior year, you have to, your day is gonna be math. And so, like, part of me says like, well, you made that situation, because, you know, those who don't learn from history are destined to repeat it. And the same is true with math and English and history and, you know, everything else, but...
There have been a couple of occurrences somewhere along the ways where kids have ended up with two maths senior year or two Englishes senior year. But I, I don't think we've ever had anybody who had to do two maths, two Englishes. A couple of things with that. One was that, um, at one point, and I don't remember when it came out, but there used to be the, in the, in the program of studies, was that you had to take a math, a science, um, a math every year. But some kids doubled up. So in other words, and there are some people who leave here taking six, seven maths.
Yeah.
Uh, because they basically become electives, if you will, but they doubled up early on. And then the complaint was that, well, they're not taking, some of the kids are taking two, so they don't have to take it senior year so that they can, they can take it easy senior year. So I don't know if that's still in the program of studies. It's been a while since I've looked at that. I know we, we had talked about taking, about making it part of the program of studies again and so forth. And the other piece of it is that when you retain students, the, a conversation has to, totally devoid of credits, has to be centered around, that was me, I'm sorry. Has to be centered around, um, your dues and your community service piece as well. Because if you've already paid your, your sophomore dues, you don't have to pay it twice type of thing. So, it's, it's, it's just another little caveat that becomes part of this.
So I guess, I'm kind of looking like, what, what are your opinions on, say, the English and math freshman piece?
I did, I, it looks like when I first read through it, I didn't balk at it at all. Like, that makes sense. But as you start talking, I'm like, okay, well, you know, maybe you don't have to, but...
And it, it made so much sense if, if this was, if this was Murdoch High School. It makes a lot of sense. You know, it's, it's kind of that self-preservation thing. And, and the idea of, you know, you're just feeding children to the wolves if you send them to take MCAS and they're not ready.
You know, in order to pass, you know, to go from sophomore to junior, you have to have taken at least one, you have to have passed math at least once. You know, so you can't carry, you know, four maths into junior year. And same thing with English. And in order to go from junior to senior, you have to have passed at least two. Again, so you're not, again, you're not carrying three maths into senior year. Max you can carry is two, something, you know, something like that. I, I think it would be good to have some of those kind of minimum benchmarks worked in there.
Right, because if you need four, you don't want to be in the position where somebody's taking everything senior year.
One of the things that I thought of, Josh, and I think I, I mentioned it to you, was the history, because you have to take four years and they have to be sequential, that 25 credits, that it should maybe be five in math, five in English, and maybe five in history, because you, you can double up in it, but ideally, they're supposed to build upon each other.
Right.
Supposed to be building blocks.
I mean, the only place that really I, I would wanna see a kid be able to double up would be like world history and US one, because I mean, there's a little bit of a...
Different subject matter.
But you know, if a student's taking US one, US two, and US three at the same time, you know, they're, they're learning about the 1820s in one period, and then the next period, they're learning about the 1930s.
It's a rotating schedule, so where were we, you know?
Yeah, you know.
Time thing. I assume there's a max number of credits each year also?
Uh, well, there, that's a great question. So, I mean, a student can take courses outside of DHS. They can take them, you know, with the, the, um, the early college program that we have. Like, a student can take after-school courses at Quinn Sig. I'm trying to get it so we can host one of those sooner or later. I just need a teacher that will, um, bite it, going through their process to, to become an adjunct professor. So, we don't have a max now. So here's what comes in with having a max, is what do you do with the student who finishes, only needs two courses in senior year? You know? That can go two ways. You can have it, I had a student who did that at Murdoch High School. We ran out of maths for him with Calc BC as a junior. So, he basically spent most of his senior year, most of the day he spent it at Mount Wachusett. But that was easy, Mount Wachusett was 15 minutes away.
Right.
So...
So let me, this is, I, like, I'll try to get...
You can have the other side of it where the kid's taking basket weaving, three, four, and five instead of, you know, score courses.
So I'm, this is the specific thing that I'm trying to envision. Again, I understand why you start with 25 credits for the freshman. However, I could see a parent like myself saying, okay, it's high school, you're emotional, there's a lot going on, let's take it easy. Like, let's just get the 25 credits, you've got challenges, like 25 credits, that's what it says in the handbook. Now it's sophomore year, now we have the biggest jump, 35 credits, you're gonna have to do this year to be promoted to junior year.
You basically have to pass everything at that point.
Right.
Or they have to repeat it in summer school.
So, right, so as a parent, I feel like I would want that, like, prompter information to know, okay, maybe not take it so easy freshman year, like, maybe take on a little bit more, so it's not like such a big jump the following year. And I don't, like, as a parent, the more info you give me, like, the better I feel about it.
Well, but as somebody who's gone through the high school and kids in eighth grade making their schedules for high school.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, I don't know all the kids, but I have not heard of anybody who's been recommended to take only 25 credits. I mean, they're all given a full schedule.
Yeah, everybody's given a full schedule.
You get a full schedule.
So, yeah. If, if, if...
Just you have that room to fail a couple.
Okay.
Right.
So it's not that you would take fewer courses, it's just that if you didn't pass...
The, so freshmen are still enrolled for 35 credits.
Okay.
They, you know, they have, they're, they're under study halls, basically, for freshmen and sophomores. So, they're, they're enrolled for seven courses. So this would be that they have actually, they would have to actually fail the two courses for them to not...
So it's just that they don't get held back if they fail those courses.
Right, we won't hold them back if they fail two courses. And that, you know, I, I don't, the, the term social promotion is, is sort of anathema among, um, a lot of secondary school educators. Because, you know, they say, oh, that middle school, they just move the kids on no matter what. But I think that there is something to be said about, um, if you, if you really take that freshman who's already, it's a big jump to go from eighth grade to ninth grade, it really is. And now you say, well, you know, you blew it, so now you're a freshman again. So we give them that little bit of leeway to keep with their peers.
I think this works well, too, even going to sophomore. So if you get your full 35 freshman year, and then now you have that room to only get 25 in sophomore year potentially, and you still get your 60 at that point.
Right.
You'd still have to fail two.
Yeah, so, yeah, so you'd still, if, if you passed everything freshman year, you still have that room to fail two in sophomore year and still move on, and then as, you know, so...
Okay. All right, that clarifies it for me.
Yes, yeah, they'd still take a full...
And you could do 30, 30, 30 freshman year, 30 sophomore.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
We could do that, too, yeah.
So I, I think, I think the schedule overall for the credits makes sense. It's just a matter of how much of math, history, English do you want to require?
Right, how much do we want to prescribe to, to a student?
And there are no changes to the requirements for the four Englishes, the four math, the four history.
It's the graduation requirements.
There's three, three sciences, and you need to pass PE, you need to pass health.
The two foreign language, the arts.
World language as well, Spanish, I should say. I don't know why we're just calling it Spanish, because there is no option for world language anymore, it's just Spanish.
I do see Becky's point, though. If you haven't done this, to, to get something in the handbook that says 25 credits, you might not realize that your kid's gonna get a schedule of 35 credits.
That's actually a really good point, Kelly.
So wording might be...
It, it might have to actually be the class of 2024, not this year's freshman, but next year's freshman.
I was thinking that.
Oh, 2024.
Like, myself excluded.
It's almost 2020.
Myself excluded, I know a lot of parents who the first time would really want to know, okay, like, what is this gonna look like? And so even if there was like a second column, that's like standard enrollment is 35 credits or something like that.
Yeah, a policy they can... Yep, students take 35 credits, they must pass 25.
And it's just like a standard cumulative, minimum cumulative, you know, for each year, to kind of go through that.
No, no, I think that that's a good way to set it up, you know?
I think, you know, because you're used to dealing with the high school, and those of us have been through, we don't really think about that. But I, I appreciate that you brought that up, because...
When I saw earn, I really thought that it would be an election from the student and the parent, like, okay, we're gonna choose 25 credits.
More like a college.
Exactly. Choose 25 credits, but then next year, uh-oh, like, now the shoe dropped and we have to do another, like, we have to do 35 to continue on.
Right.
So you might be setting your kid up to take on too much, but if, I see what it is now, so that makes sense.
Yeah, that's more of a, and I know what you're saying, yeah, I, I agree with you in that, that's like a college. Like, my son, my youngest, who didn't tell me until the semester started that, oh dad, I only took nine credits. Okay?
I'm assuming that's a great impersonation.
He really does talk like that.
And, um, the, the, the graduation requirements do appear in both the handbook, but also in the program of studies.
Yeah, no, I, I knew those were, yeah, but again, I think these are more of those, those benchmarks, I guess, throughout.
The more time it shows up, the more chance you have of somebody seeing it.
Yeah.
So if you're okay about tabling it, well, I can kind of talk to the rest of the staff about, you know, maybe that, you know, you need to have passed at least one history, math, science, and English to be a junior, like, that sort of a thing that kind of, to build those minimums so that the kids, because it really is about making sure that kids don't fall behind. And that's, if they've, if they've passed all their math, English, science, and they haven't passed the history yet, and they're going into junior year, and, um, we, we do have a student who's in that situation this year, then, um, you know, maybe that, that's...
And I, I would, I would just say that if you can't resolve the issue of, you know, how many maths you want to have as, by whatever point, I, I wouldn't hesitate to implement at least the number of credits piece for the, for the first class you can get that in for. You know, regardless of whether, whether you put the restriction or the, the caveats on how many maths and whatnot, get that in as soon as possible, and then you can always add on the pieces around, you have to have so many maths and so many, you know, that, that feels like it makes sense to me.
The other, the other piece of the argument with the MCAS thing that we looked at is if a student were to not pass English and history, so we keep them as a freshman, they could conceivably jump to being a junior the next year. And if they were to do that, because now they're still on track to graduate with their peers. But it also means if they're gonna struggle with MCAS, instead of getting five chances to take it, they would only have three.
Right.
Two as a junior. Well, so we looked through it, and, um, we've only had, I think we said two, that we came up in the last five years, who actually went to the five tries on the math MCAS. And we've never had anybody in English do it. So it ended up being a lot less pertinent of a factor in the decision on that. So that was, it was another thing where we thought of something, oh, we don't wanna do it because of this. And then when we looked at the data, well, it's not really a problem. So we were still kind of stuck with not knowing which way to go. What I, I think, if it's okay with you, if we can table this for next time, and I'm, I'm gonna revise this and do, it'll be for class of 2024 as well. And I'll have another, um, faculty meeting and another department chair meeting where I can talk this over with them and, and see if we, if we feel more passionately about one way or the other, as far as those go. I, I think we liked the, the number of credits, that was pretty universally liked, but, uh, it was through the other points that we're, we were sort of stuck on, so...
Sounds good. No, but thank you for bringing it forward.
All right, no, thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
So next up, we have the district safety plan.
So, nothing has changed, yes, Josh, nothing has changed in, um, the, the question is, is the committee prepared to vote to accept that document that you, that you received and that you have to review, with the understanding that it's an, it's, it's a fluid product that will consistently be up, much like the handbook, much like, um, the program of studies, e- each year it's being revised, the faculty handbook and so forth, it gets revised. The theory is that the committee will continue to work on, on the handbook, and if there are things that need to be added, they'll be added, if there are things that maybe need to be changed and taken out. So you'll come back to revisit it, but it's our starting point document that will be something that we'll continue to build and grow upon, uh, e- each year.
That's one of my points, you know, that needs to be a living document that gets updated pretty frequently. I would say, you know, at least once a year, if not twice a year, it's reviewed and, and updated. And, and, but just for, for the, you know, thank you to all the, all the fine folks that put that together and, and to prove that I actually read through it. On page 25, there's a section referring to rumors.
Yep.
And the first section, it, it quickly has a typo that refers to them as tumors. So, um, so, you know, I, I did read it, and we might wanna fix that, you know?
Say it again, page?
Page 25?
Page what?
Yeah, page 25. It was, it was page 25 on mine, I'm not sure.
Change the rumors from, change the tumors to rumors.
Tumors to rumors, I guess, yeah, so... Are you going to that, too?
I'll let, I'll let Mr. Vega know. Did you have any other questions, um, on anything that was in there, anything else that was left on?
I did, there's a lot there to get through, and I, you know, I don't wanna pretend like I read every single word of it, but I definitely, um, read through quite a bit of it. Just, yeah, that reunification section, I got to that thinking that was gonna be like three pages, and that was initial, 18 or pages on, on that, so...
That was, when, when Mr. Vega and I went to the workshop on that, like, neither of us had ever really given it more than a couple of minutes thought. And we get there, and they, they're like, so how are you gonna account for that the kids went with the right people? How are you gonna account that all of your kids went? Where are you gonna keep them while you're waiting? What are you gonna do when you have 300 screaming parents demanding that they want their kid right away? How are you gonna manage all those things? And suddenly, we kind of realized it's maybe the hardest part, that we actually have a personal, say, because, you know, if something happens, gas leak or something like that, somebody else is gonna come here and take charge of it. Like, Josh Romano is gonna have to say what to do for gaffe safety. But getting the kids back to their parents, well, that is gonna be me and Desi and Kevin, and then that's, you know?
Now, that was a good point in some place, like, you know, the, the police are responsible for this, the fire department's responsible for the fire, you guys are responsible for the students, and that's, you know, that's, that's it, you know, so...
So it, it, this will get married in with, uh, the town administrator has, has had the first meeting, there's another meeting coming up, and that involves the chief of the police, chief of fire, uh, the DPW, and myself, there's five of us. And, um, he's had a chance to review all of the contents. Uh, the original document he, he saw was just the, um, the actual book itself, but not all the ancillary materials and, and documents and so forth that, that are a part of it. So, he will, they will give some recommendations that will get then passed down to the, to the, uh, the group, and they'll make their adjustments from there. It's, it's, we've come a long way from what was a blue flip chart that we had, that are in the office and a file cabinet stashed away, that, that I brought with me from Hope Dale was, was the first iteration. And so, um, this is a great starting point. Is it, is it the greatest document since, you know, the, the FEMA came up with? No, it's not, but it is a good document, it's a working document, um, and it is a, it's a work in progress. It'll always be a work in progress going forward.
So with that in mind, if we vote to adopt it, are you thinking that we would get updates, like you said, once a year and then have to vote on...
So, if, any addendums, any, any amendments to it would have to be something that you would have to, that you would have to vote on?
Well, but there could be many, um, what is the proper phrase?
Because that's what I'm wondering, if there's a lot of different.
It's just administrative, like, things.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because there are, oh, yeah, anything, anything I would think of consequence in change of procedures.
Policies and procedures.
I would think, but then there are a lot of things that we will need to change regularly that are part of that, you know.
Yeah, so I wouldn't want to have.
You know, or, or, you know, things like that, or just administrative.
There's, there's this list of names of, you know, people and phone numbers, I wouldn't want.
Yeah, anything like that, no.
We don't want those brought forward to us. If there's a significant change in the way we handle it, then we'd want it brought forward, so.
Right.
And even if it's the case of, you know, again, at least, you know, once a year, at this time of year, whatever it happens to be, say, hey, you know, we, we've updated all the relative administrative information, made no changes to procedure, or we made extra, you know, procedure, just as, as an FYI, even then, I'm not sure we have to approve that, but.
Right.
I think just, just have a discussion about it once a year, you know, so.
And, and again, the hope is to, is to, is to sort of marry these two things together so that, you know, that, that we're not duplicating the process and duplicating the work.
Yeah.
My, my, my thought is that down the road, it would just become one, one group. But right now, we had already started for two years to work on this, this document, when the town administrator had talked about wanting to do some additions and, and, and some additional materials that he wanted in there, and so forth, to which we said, okay, let's sit down and we'll talk about it. That's where the walkie-talkie discussion came from, was that that, the panic switches that we talked about was part of that as well. So some of it is not stuff that would go into the document, some of it is stuff that we would just do. You know, do we need, you know, are we going to put all of the, the beautiful glassits in the elementary school and put that, that sheet over it so that they, they can't break it with, with, with a bullet or something like that? Those are things that, that are part of the discussion that we're having, not so much the document itself as, as safety measures and so forth.
And I would say, I had a discussion with the town administrator this week as well on, you know, various topics, but thi, this came up, and it was good to hear that he has some strong interest in maybe developing some roadways that would connect our high school over to Martin Road and, and here as well, so we'd have better access to the municipal center as, as a staging area and whatnot, and hopefully that's not ruining any kind of, speaking out of turn there, but, you know, it's just. I think it's, you know, we talked about, about, you know, reunification and, you know, what, there's not a lot of good spots, not a lot of easy ways ins and outs, it'd be good to have some additional ins and outs from, you know, all of our buildings here, so.
Well, when you brought that up, it reminded, immediately reminded me that there's, the Oktoberfest is this weekend, and one of the things that they're doing is they're going to close down Main Street, but they're also using it as sort of a drill. Okay, how would we channel traffic? Where would we channel the traffic to? What are some of the possibilities of issues if we channel the traffic in this direction?
Yeah, they're bringing some additional state vehicles through to kind of, as part of the drill.
And that, that, that relates to the question that was asked, I think, Becky, you asked about getting the kids down to, say, the, the.
The senior center.
Post office, the senior center, and so forth. And how would you do that without, you know, without the possibility of a thousand cars driving up, you know, Gleason to try to get their kids? And, and so that, you know, blocking off Main Street is one of the things that they had talked about, in developing reunification locations. That's the kind of stuff that I think that, that Mr. Wojcicki is talking about, not so much the changes to the document as it is.
We would have our own.
Procedure type of thing, so.
We would have our own, yeah.
But you were talking about that, and now I completely forgot what you, there was another thing that you guys did, but I, I lost it, it'll come back to me.
Maybe after, I, I did think of one other thing, too, is that, once we have this document as well, there are state grants that require you to have a document like this in order to apply for a state grant. There was a state grant that came out last year.
That's what spurred this, this whole thing on.
Right.
That, that we couldn't apply for because we didn't have, because they want a comprehensive plan, so.
I was looking at it as a, as a possible grant, then I read, you know, please submit your district safety plan, and I looked everywhere and, and there was not one in it. So I said, well, maybe we should develop one, and which is what they did, as well, so. Oh, we, we were talking about Mr. Wojcicki, and we were talking about blocking off the road, and, and I figured, ah, it's gone.
Capital panic buttons?
It's gone, it's gone.
All right, it'll pop in as soon as we try to adjourn. So, if, if there are other questions, comments, concerns.
You know what, I didn't create a, but.
I'd be looking for just.